Do we have, we do have the sponsor here. And we will have the introduction of the next two bills. And then you can test, you'll have three minutes to testify on either one of them. So in other words, we're doing this through them at one time because they're very close in nature. So, welcome Representative Dunphy. She will present LD 991. Are there any legislators present that are going to participate in the next two bills? I see Senator Johnson and also Representative Timberlake. And Senator Burns is going to be there. We're going to, so Representative Dunphy, please introduce your bill.
Thank you. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Dunphy, and fellow members of the Joint Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry. My name is Michelle Dunphy, and I represent Old Town in the Indian Island Village District, also known as District 122. And I'm here today to present to you LD 991, an Act to amend Maine's genetically-modified food products labeling law. In the 126th legislature, LD 718, an Act to protect Maine's main food consumers right to know about genetically engineered food, was passed to require labeling of food containing genetically-modified organisms, or GMOs. But Mainers still don't know if their food contains GMOs because the bill was passed with a trigger provision that five contiguous states, including Maine, also pass similar laws before Maine's bill can go into effect. LD 718 also had a sunset date of January 1st, 2018. Nevertheless, the bill represents exciting legislation and a huge step forward in speaks to what the people of Maine and consumers want. They want to know what's in their food. And as a consumer, a mom, and a person who cares deeply about what you've got to purchase and bring into my home, I felt this legislation was of critical importance in allowing us to make choices with regard to our food. And choice is what my bill, LD 991, is further attempting to achieve. This bill is not mandating we ban GMOs in our food. It only asks that consumers be able to know if their food contains GMOs. It's really that simple. It's putting the power of the choice into the hands of Maine consumers that want this knowledge to make decisions with regard to food. I know many people who purchase food without reading labels of any kind. I also know many people who purchase food based on budget, not on whether food is local or organic, or has a certain percentage of fat. It is my belief this type of consumer will purchase, will continue to purchase whether we require labeling or not. As for myself, I always read labels. I read every label. I have a lifetime of allergies and learned as a child the value of a label. And while I still have food allergies and sensitivities, reading a label has become so much more. I read labels to look for organic foods. I look for additives. I look for allergens. And I look for non-GMO food. It's my personal choice to buy local, to buy organic, to buy food that does not contain GMOs. The point is, it's about choice and the right to know. The right to make informed decisions. And I'll be honest, there are times I purchase food that likely contains GMOs. The impetus for my bill was an article in a local newspaper touting genetically-modified apples would be coming to Maine this summer. And in my mind, that's just simply wrong. The following name is when I have fond memories of apple picking as a child, and I, and taking my daughter to her nearby orchard for the first time when she was a baby. Making applesauce, apple pie, apple cider, and eating so many apples, I always vowed never to eat another until I do. Apples are one of the things that people associate with the state of Maine. When apples are so plentiful, how are we gonna know a genetically-modified apple when we see it? Maine has the greatest increase in the percentage of young organic farmers in the country. We have a bounty of CSAs, CSF, farmers markets, local markets, organic farms, and wonderful crops that people identify with Maine. I have a CSA with Snake Root Organics, and I proudly visit the year-round farmers market in Borno. And I take deep pride not only in the choices I make, but that I am able to make them. And we have so much to be proud of when it comes to our food culture. Beyond all that, in my mind, this issue is simple. We want GMOs labeled. We want choice. Maine is a sovereign state, and we don't want to wait for New Hampshire or any other state to act. I believe we should be a leader in this movement and that we have the right to know what is in our food. For me, this bill is about clarity in consumer choice and food safety. But you'll be hearing from a lot of people today who have other and overlapping reasons for supporting this important legislation. Promotion of public health, increased food safety, prevention of consumer confusion, negative effects on the environment of increased pesticide use, promotion of Maine agriculture, and the protection of cultural and religious practices. I believe the Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry is the best and the most exciting committee of all of the joint standing committees, simply because this committee touches every person in the state of Maine with our decisions. We have a responsibility to do what's right and what's just for the people of Maine. And making decisions about the food we eat is powerful. Consider the recent polling showing 97% of the people surveyed in Maine are in favor of labeling. And again, we're talking about labels for food containing GMOs, not banning GMOs. People want to know what's in their food, and simply put, they have a right to know. Thank you. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Representative Dunphy? Senior, thank you very much for your presentation and your introduction. Senator Burns is here. And Senator Burns will introduce his bill. Did your committee, uh, completed, finished for the day?
No, sir. We just got through the first bill. And then you've got to have a button.
We will hear from representatives and senators next.
Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry. My name is David Burns, and I am Representative Senate District Number Six, which is all of Washington County and parts of Union Park County. And before you, today present the bill LD 1326, an Act to require labeling of all genetically-modified products. My privilege to be able to present this bill to you today is requested by one of my constituents. I say this because I was elected, just as you were, to fairly represent all of my constituents. It's my belief that these legislators have the connection with the legislative process and one of the primary means they have to affect change in the laws that govern us. My constituent, who you will hear from momentarily, has devoted much of her adult life in advocating for the protection we citizens need and for our environment. This bill demonstrates these efforts to protect Maine people from, in her opinion, harmful genetically-engineered food. This bill adds seed stock to the laws regarding the labeling of genetically-engineered food. It would also end the exemption from the labeling requirement for the packaged processed food with only a minimal content of genetically-engineered materials by July of 1, 2019. It replaces the reference to eating establishments and amends the law passed in the 126th legislature pertaining to the adoption of GMO requirements by five states or at least 20 million people. I know that this committee is spending much of the day today discussing similar legislation from various perspectives. I believe that your collective wisdom and experience will thought through these issues and come to some position, or positions, that the entire legislature can take action upon. My request is that you give this perspective due consideration and not let it get lost in the process. Finally, I want to thank my constituent Nancy Holden for bringing these ideas to you, to me, and thank this committee for its engagement.
Questions for Senator Burns? Thank you. Thank you, Senator Burns. At this time, before we get to the person, I promise to go first, we've got a legislator. Any senators present?
Matt, Matt paid us $20 a piece, so let him go first.
Yeah, I know, but it's real. Senator Johnson? Would you like to?
I would. Representative Coolier.
Okay. Is education still going?
Yes, sir. We've got a work session on a lot of marijuana in schools, so that should be interesting.
I'm not there.
Senator Edgcombe, we do miss you down there, though, Senator Edgcombe. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and members of the Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry Committee. I'm Representative Matt Coolier. I proudly represent House District 86, which is right outside the window, west of North Augusta. I'm really proud to be here, my first time in front of the Act Committee after two terms in the legislature, so. I'm actually going to be presenting testimony in support of LD 991, which I'm a co-sponsor of, on behalf of Jared Greenfield, who is the co-founder of Ben &amp; Jerry's Ice Cream. And I think another reason why we should really be in love with Ben &amp; Jerry's Ice Cream, they're in favor of labeling and transparency, which I think is very important. So, on behalf of all of us at Ben &amp; Jerry's, I want to thank the committee for this opportunity to provide testimony on LD 991, an Act to amend Maine's GMO labeling law. My sincere apologies for not being able to join in person. I look forward to having the opportunity to visit Maine sometime in the near future and support this important issue. Ben &amp; Jerry's supports LD 991, and we'd be proud to have me join Vermont in instituting a no strings attached GMO labeling law. The recent Second Circuit Court decision regarding Vermont's Act 120, allowing the state to move forward with implementation, reinforces our position that states have the authority to require companies to disclose the presence of genetically and genetically ingredients. I'd like to focus my remarks today on three main areas. Our position on transparency and a consumer's right to know, and specifically mandatory labeling of genetically engineered food. Ben &amp; Jerry's approach to packaging and the frequency with which we make changes to our packaging. And third, the question of whether mandating labeling of GMO food would have any impact on food prices at the supermarket. First, I'll discuss our position on transparency and labeling. At Ben &amp; Jerry's, we are pleased to stand with many consumers, companies, advocates, and policymakers in supporting the push to require mandatory labeling of food products with genetically engineered ingredients. We strongly believe that people have a right to know what's in the food they eat, and that only by providing information on the product's packaging can we ensure people's freedom to choose what's in the food they purchase. Just like labels that require disclosure of farm-raised salmon or orange juice from concentrate, labeling the GE food will provide consumers the information they need to make choices for themselves and their families. At Ben &amp; Jerry's, we've been a longstanding proponent of consumers' right to know. That's most notably expressed in our hard fought candidacy to inform consumers about recumbent bovine growth hormone, RPGH. Ben &amp; Jerry's was one of the first companies to label our products with RPGH message, and we led the legal fight almost 15 years ago to clear the way for all companies who sought to tell consumers that their products came from cows not treated with genetically engineered growth hormone. It's clear that the interest in labeling is a consumer-driven movement, and it's growing. We hear it daily from our fans. We don't believe that increasing interest in where our food comes from is a trend and that it's going to go away. And as fast, and as a fast-moving consumer goods company, we think the best approach is to stand with our consumers, who are calling for increased transparency about what's in our food. I do want to say that we would prefer a national framework for GMO labeling. However, absent that, we believe a harmonized state-by-state approach can create a path that achieves the same end. A handful of states can create the critical mass that will have the effect of a de facto national standard. To be clear, we do, we do not believe that bill introduced in the United States Congress by Representative Mike Pompeo meets the test for creating a national mandatory GMO labeling standard. A voluntary standard that preempts states' rights is a step in the wrong direction and will only enhance consumer confusion. New England is leading the way on this issue, and I would urge you to join Vermont in passing legislation requiring mandatory labeling of genetically engineered food without the trigger. Now let me spend a couple of minutes talking about packaging and why opponents of labeling who suggest it will raise food prices are simply wrong. Let me give you a little background on how we manage packaging at Ben &amp; Jerry's, which I hope will help you understand why a small label change like LD 991 contemplates would not be an owner's want. The overwhelming majority of Ben &amp; Jerry's packaging, that Ben &amp; Jerry's packaging buys is for our pint business. We have about 50 different SKUs in our portfolio at any given time. Every year, we drop a few flavors and add a few more. There are a number of reasons why food companies will make changes to their packaging. From ever-evolving regulatory landscape to allergy concerns, ingredient and formula changes, new marketing claims, as well as updates to brands like Good Field. As a food company, we regularly make changes, sometimes big, sometimes small, to our packaging. In fact, every year, we make changes to between 25 and 50% of our packaging. Over the last seven years, we've gone through three full-line redesigns. That's changing every single pint in our line. For food companies, evolving packaging is just part of doing business. At Ben &amp; Jerry's, we manage our packaging inventory very closely so that our packaging evolves. We can do it without having to write out of date, write off out-of-date back. There are risks to food businesses insitting on large inventories of packaging. In 2013, we achieved fair trade certification across the entire product line of our flavors, and so we added the fair trademark to all of our pints. It was a rolling transition for our pints as we phased in the fair trade certified ingredients and then added claim to our packaging. As we went through this process, for our top-selling flavors, we were literally ordering packaging on a weekly basis. For our second-tier flavors, we were ordering every three weeks. The important point here is that this change to every single pint package in our line of adding the fair trade certification mark was not a cost passed through to consumers. Again, that wasn't a pass-through to consumers. It did not impact their pricing at all. There are a number of things that could potentially impact the cost of products. First and foremost, carry prices. And while there are a variety of things that can impact the price a consumer pays at the retail, for a pint at Ben &amp; Jerry's, small changes in our packaging is not one of them. The recent announcement by Hershey, along with previous announcements by General Nelson Post, that they will source non-GMO ingredients in some cereals, and Chipotle's completion of their transition to non-GMO ingredients only reinforces the point that interest and momentum is on the side of transparency and GMO labeling. If we can't label farm, if we can label farm-raised salmon and concentrated orange juice, certainly we can require a labeling of GMO food. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony on this critical bill. And he said that you can reach out to his assistant, Chris Miller, at 802-846-1500 if you have any questions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Representative Coolier? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Welcome, Senator Johnson.
Good afternoon. Welcome. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, members of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry. I'm Senator Chris Johnson, representing State Senate District 13 in the Mid-Both Region. I'm here today in support of LD 991, an Act to amend Maine's genetically-modified food products labeling law. As someone who believes strongly in the rights of people, I was a proud lead co-sponsor of LD 17 and 126th legislature, which became law. Everyone has a right to decide for themselves about the food they grow or buy, and what they feed their families. The impact and long-term human safety of genetically engineered food ingredients remain unproven. GMO labeling enables consumers to reduce their risks. These are the concepts behind Maine's current GMO labeling law. In the spirit of compromise, with people greatly concerned about Maine going it alone on labeling of GMOs, and the possible legal expenses, expenses of constitutionality challenges, et cetera, we put a trigger on the bill of five contiguous states, including Maine, to enact similar laws before our labeling would go into effect. Several things have changed since it was enacted. Connecticut passed a similar law with a trigger. Vermont passed a similar law without the trigger. The World Health Organization concluded that glyphosate, as used on roundup rate genetically engineered crops, probably causes cancer. The Federal Circuit Court in Vermont ruled that Vermont's GMO labeling law is constitutional. And 97% of Maine people now support GMO labeling. In other words, we are no longer alone among New England states. The danger of the most widely-used weed killer aimed exclusively at GMO crops is now a recognized health concern. And Vermont has already won an important first legal decision in the issue of challenge to a GMO labeling law. Mainers are overwhelmingly ready now for GMO labeling. Yet for lack of labeling to inform us as consumers, you and I, our children and grandchildren, even our unborn, remain laboratory rats in this ill-conceived experiment conducted on a national scale. All people should have the right to opt out of that experiment. But it is not that simple, because we cannot live without food. And we do not know which food is made with genetic engineering. Labeling can prevent that inherent deception. It enables informed choice by consumers. And Maine's thriving local food economy would likely benefit from the right-to-know GMO labeling, particularly because wholesomeness is part of Maine's brand image. Maine can protect, support, and find opportunity in ensuring that foods here were not made with genetic engineering unless they say so. And now we have fewer reasons to delay doing so, and one good reason why we should do it now, the health risks of our families. I urge you to affirm Maine people's right to know which foods are made with genetically engineered ingredients through an opt-to-pass report on LD 911. It's time to pull the trigger on GMO labeling. Thank you, and I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for Senator Johnson? Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Senator Timberlake.
Chairman, I don't see any cider or apples on our. I think I already taken care of that Representative Black in a previous engagement when I was Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry, I am State Representative Jeffrey Timberlake, representing District 75, leads, turn and pat a little more. I stand before you to oppose LD 991, an Act to amend Maine's genetically-modified food products labeling law. I oppose this bill not because I'm against GMO labeling, but because it's wrong to put Maine on an island. Maine cannot be and should not be on this issue alone. On my own farm, at Rickahill Orchards, we do not grow or sell genetically-modified products. I am not testifying for myself. I am testifying because it's the right thing to do. If the legislature passes this bill, Maine will be an outlier, and our small businesses will be placed in a bad position. Policy in Washington, DC is where this problem should be handled, needs to be fixed before this bill is passed. Anyone who knows me also knows that I dislike ethanol in my gas. This week, I let my own bill die because policy in Washington, DC is where this needs to be fixed, directed. Before we can do anything in Maine, if you, before we can do anything else in Maine, if you feel that we need to do something, I would suggest that you write a resolve to our congressional delegation and ask them to fix it. As far as GMO apples coming to Maine, that would be news to me and our family, one of the larger apple growers in the state of Maine who attend every meeting. The reason is about growing apples and what new products are coming to Maine. Our family alone will be planting around 12,000 new apple trees this year, and not one of them is genetically modified. I do not know of anyone else who plans on producing one because, even in the Northeast. And the reason I say this is because I didn't want to be a hypocrite on my ethanol bill, and I hope that we don't do that here by doing something that Washington should be fixing and not us, and not us. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this bill, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And as you know, this amendment got put on from Representative Black, and I put it on last time because it was a way to keep Maine a good place, and I think it was a good amendment, and we'll do it again. Thank you.
Senator Dill has a question.
Sure he does.
Just out of curiosity, do you know anything about the genetically-modified apples that are talking about?
Uh, I know, I know enough to be scary.
That goes without saying, but I just.
Thank you, Senator Dill, but all I know is, it's basically being grown in, up in Canada is where it was being tested, and it, I hadn't heard of it. It was news to me to hear today that it would be going into production anywhere because we haven't heard of it going anywhere, nor do we even know if we could even grow it in the Northeast this morning. Thank you.
Here are no further questions?
Okay.
We're open for legislators still? Is there another?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry Committee. My name is Nathan Wadsworth. I represent District 70, which is Brownfield, Freiburg, Parta Level, Porter, in my hometown of Hiram. I've come before your committee today to offer testimony in support of LD 991, an Act to amend Maine's genetically-modified food products labeling law. I have a young family, a two-year-old and a nine-month-old. My wife and I make sure we know all we can about the foods that we provide for our children. Okay, in reality, my wife is actually the one that reads the labels and makes these nutritional decisions, an important clerk, patient, because she is listening at home today. And I'd like to actually be welcome to whatever healthy meal that she has taken the time to prepare this evening. At this morning, it was actually extremely fine from beef from our farm. In all seriousness, I think it's important to explain what this law does, not do. A labeling, a labeling required does not mean that GMO foods are banned in Maine. I'm sure most of you have had the shared experience of making less than responsible diet choices following some of these marathon public hearing days. This law is not about government making choices for the people. It is about empowering people to make these choices themselves by providing consumers with some very basic information. I realize that at this point in time, researchers have not shown a direct causal relationship between genetically-modified food consumption in a particular disease. However, you'll hear from some of those experts today that will explain heightened incidence of certain medical conditions tied to consumption of GMO foods. There was a time in this country where we don't know, where we didn't know that smoking cigarettes was unhealthy. Similarly, the EPA allowed you Similarly, the EPA allowed use of DDT for decades before Rachel Carson published Silent Spray and educated thousands of parents about the heightened potential for birth defects in children whose mothers had ingested foods that had been treated with toxins, insecticide. I'm sure you will hear some arguments about how this will put Maine in a non-competitive position, causing increased food prices. I feel like I've come to know a lot of people around this horseshoe pretty well over the last few months, and I'm positive that you are too bright to be fooled by these scare tactics. Let me shed some light on that for you. The clerk is also passing around a study from Emory University Law Professor Joanna Shepherd-Bailey assessing the California Right-to-Know Act. The study shows that a maximum, this change would have cost each California taxpayer a grand total of a dollar twenty-seven. That's not annually. That is a one-time cost. I might add that Prop. Thirty-seven failed by a slim margin in two thousand and twelve as consumer interests were outspent five to one with Monsanto and industry allies spending forty-six million dollars to influence voters. That is more than all the money that was spent on all elections in Maine last year combined. I'm all for free speech, especially political speech, but those are staggering numbers. Ninety-seven percent of Mainers support the right to know. You just heard Representative Pulea retestimony from Ben &amp; Jerry's. I don't even think ice cream has a ninety-seven percent approval rating. I appreciate your time, and I ask that you take care to make a considerate decision with regard to LD 991.
Questions for Representative Washworth? Our chair.
Thank you, Representative Washworth, for your testimony. What do you weigh on the front?
We have a beef farm with about twenty-five head of beef, and some vegetables with some.
No further questions? Thank you for your testimony. Welcome, Representative Bates.
Thanks, Senator. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the committee. I would like to, in the sake of brevity, knowing that there are a lot of people here with valuable information to give, just turn to give a couple of remarks. I'd be open for questions. I can provide my original written testimony to the committee if they would like it, but I will not, with the chief's permission, just give a few comments that are not given as something that would affect.
Proceed.
Thanks, sir. So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Representative Dylan Bates. I represent District Thirty-Five in Scenic, Westbrook, Maine. And unlike the several testifiers before me, I am not a farmer, but I, my mother is an organic farmer, and I've grown up in a scenario where we grew most of our own food. The reality here, and the reason that I support Representative Dunphy's bill, is that the court of public opinion has already spoken. You've heard the ninety-seven percent number drilled into your heads. I don't need to repeat it, but that's hard to ignore. The reality is that this problem of needing to know what's in your food is really a very recent one in human history. For the majority of our existence, we've always known what was in our food. And as such, we shouldn't have to fight to get it back. I understand the protection measures that were intended by the original bill, but I do not believe that we should be beholden to New Hampshire, or for that matter, any other state. Someone does have to lead on this issue, and if we want to truly live out the mantra of our state's motto of "Dirigo," meaning "I leave," I think this is the time to do it. I'm also here as a representative or liaison to the youth caucus, which is the members of the House and Senate under age thirty-five, who, the vast majority of whom, have elected to support this measure as we feel it's very impactful for a younger generation, and I am prepared to answer any questions in that vein as to how it affects the younger people or anything else that I can be of help with.
Questions for Representative Bates? Seeing them, thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
I believe that, with the legislators?
Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Dirty Spear. I live in Hoverside. Like many non-scientists these days, I've learned to make informed judgments about genetic modification of food crops. I know, first of all, where to find reliable information distinct from disinformation propagated by vested interests aligned with multinational trade and chemical industry groups. I've listed some of them here. Rather, the most credible sources are Union of Concerned Scientists, Institute for Science and Society, Institute for Responsible Technology, Beyond Pesticides, and Center for Food Safety. For many years, these organizations have shared findings of experts in the field. Some of what they tell us, far from being precise, the technology is unpredictable and unstable. The Center for Food Safety scientists explain the problems in the engineering of the new Simplo Innate Potato, recently approved by FDA and USDA. This is an experimental GM food designed to produce fewer carcinogens when cooked at high temperatures, inadequately regulated, and therefore dangerous. Indeed, unlike the new leaf potato, now off the market, containing a BT gene, technically a pesticide, which came before the Maine pesticide control board and was, of course, approved, the innate would have no such regulatory oversight. If this potato were grown in Maine and marketed, we would have no way of knowing we were consuming an untested food engineered through a process called RNA interference. Unless it were labeled, we would be guinea pigs in a mass biological experiment. The doctrine called substantial equivalence, which guides USDA and FDA approval processes, is a travesty. Patenting of GM crops invalidates the argument that they are equivalent to non-GM crops. For these reasons, I support the removal of the trigger clause before the labeling law takes effect. Imposing that condition during the last legislative session was a mistake.